We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Clarence, would you mind giving an invitation?
I wouldn't invite, in fact, I thought about this in church Sunday, thinking I could give a long twenty-minute form. It's about the Lord, you've called us here to do your work, we're eager to get that done. We only need you to give us patience and guidance and understanding about the job we're here to do for the town of Turrin and for the rest of the citizens as well. Amen.
Amen. Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You have a motion to approve the agenda as written. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. Motion, do you have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in the same sign, motion is seated, thank you. Okay, we've got minutes from September ninth, two thousand nineteen council workshop, September sixteenth, two thousand nineteen regular meeting, October fourteenth, two thousand nineteen council workshop, and October twenty-first council regular meeting.
Mayor, I noticed on your agenda, your new business, you've got, I had an amendment, October twenty-first minutes. If there is an amendment, it needs to be made now, at least time to do that rather than another new business.
Alright, so, we're at that point for approval of minutes, so let's review the October twenty-first. What needs to be amended? I was about here.
The missing word was a person and personnel.
Who called that?
You did.
We can't have a personal meeting to go to closed session, so that's why I think that was. Maybe one person. Any other amendments to the October twenty-first? Any more other amendments to any of the others? If not, cannot.
I need to say, because of Mrs. Townsend's departure, we're a little bit behind on trying to do minutes after she transitioned out and Renee's transitioned in. So, we're missing the September minutes and for the council workshop and the regular one. But we will have those, we're just trying to catch up. We do have the October ones though, we can approve those.
And September?
No.
All of them, I mean, we can approve all of those, those four.
Can we not approve these four? What do you see?
We can't approve the September ones because we don't have those yet.
We just need to take an approval of those two minutes until the next meeting.
Right.
Alright, so, I take that back. I'm not looking for approval for anything but the October fourteenth council workshop and the October twenty-first regular council meeting with amendment.
With the amendment. I'll make a, I'll make a motion.
I have a motion, do you have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in the same sign, motion is seated.
And Mr. Mayor, while I'm there, just, just for clarity, when we approve the, these minutes can't be published on our website or anything until we have, until we have approved them, that's correct?
That's correct.
Because I know there's been citizens asking, I've gone to the website, I haven't seen the minutes, but they hadn't been approved yet, so.
That's why.
They'll only get published when they're approved.
And something like even before council meeting, if, if it's sent out to council to, so you could review it prior to the meeting as opposed to waiting till you get in here and read it, it just needs to have draft on it. Because it's always a draft until officially approved. So if we want to send that out, I think it's entirely appropriate to do that to council. Council might disperse it, but it won't get approved as minutes until the meeting. Alright, first item for unfinished business is railroad verification right of entry for Keweenaw County. We've already approved that last council meeting, or right of entry was written and approved by our attorney, and I just signed it. Fernando's been kind of the lead on that project. Keweenaw County has already given permission to do work on our railroad, on our lease section of our railroad. And we're going to come up with a plan. The first plan is to start with some removal of some debris, stuff, junk that's there. Keweenaw County has agreed to do it. And now that we have this right of entry and approval, then we will, we will go ahead and revisit that with the county because it's already been approved by them, so they're just waiting on us to, for the legal, legalese. I would remind, if you'll... Renee, whatever committee that was, whatever agency that was with Keweenaw County, who was our contact for that? Do you remember? Was it, whoever that was, we'll make sure we, we send them a, I'd like you to send them a letter on our behalf just that we can go ahead and start the project, or we need to get re-put on their docket. I'm sure we went to the bottom of the list now, that we've delayed them. But we need to be re-upped to the top of the list. I'll try to, I'll do that with a phone call too, to the commissioner. That would probably get it reoriented. The next item on the agenda, so there's no business to do on that one. The next item on the agenda is the Ethics Commission appointments from the work session. My understanding is we tabled that to the December meeting.
Yes.
And one thing on that, Mr. Mayor, as we tabled out, I think what I'd like to see with that, with that commission is an actual ceremony with your papers handed out to them, that you officially are Ethics Committee member and make it, make it seem important because it is. So, as we talk about that for the next meeting, does it plan to do that certificate?
Alright. Next item is the downtown parking plan. And that plan has been, is still under review by Keweenaw County with regards to specifics. Todd Handley with Keweenaw County has not gotten back to me on that. And as soon as he does, we will proceed. What that will look like as far as downtown is probably going to be us going to each of the business owners, showing them the parking lot proposal, diagram, crosswalk, all that, prior to us doing anything. Prior to that, the council will be able to review the finality of the parking lot plan. All we've got at this point, it goes as far as downtown community building, and then it just stops there. But as y'all know, there's a shift in the road there, so there needs to be some crosswalk signage. Other parking spots need to be reevaluated, repainted, and so we're just going to do it all in one project. So we're still, it's bigger, it turned to be bigger than just a repainting of the lines, so we're, we're, we're working on that. But it'll be better than it was before, hopefully safer. Coming out of those spots on the sixteen is, is dangerous. Working on that. Table to December, hopefully we'll have something working by December. I'll, I'll, I'll reach out and talk for that.
And Alan, I'm hopeful that part of the plan's going to be the removal of those parking spots on the post office side. It's impossible to see coming out of that post office parking lot with those cars parked there. So we have to make some allowances, whoever's parking, they could go somewhere else.
Well, that's, that's the problem with the way it is now, is that when cars are parked in front of the sewing shop, you have to pull into the middle of the intersection to see around those cars.
Yeah, that's exactly.
So if you eliminate the parking on the other side of the road, you're forcing them to park where you have to enter, drive into the middle of the intersection to see around the cars.
Well, that, that's exactly what happens now. If you're coming out of Turrin Road trying to get to the other side, you have to pull out in the middle. So, all those things have to be taken into account when we think about how we go to rearrange it.
And I notice a lot of people use those parking spots.
Yes, they do.
So that's why I wanted to reach out to the business owners to let them aware that things will change. The diagram we have now shifts everything to the right, gives you more room to pull in and straightens out each of those parking spaces. There's just as many parking spaces, if not exactly as many, by a few. But according to the...
And they're straight in, not at an angle.
According to the safety folks with Keweenaw County, it's much safer. All those angled blocks that angle right towards sixteen are the most dangerous things right there beside the farmhouse. It's just a very...
I have one comment.
Poked it there.
Some of the people parking on the post office side are working trucks or trailers. So, they're going to need someplace to park, and they can't do necessarily a head-in thing with a trailer, so.
You're talking about when they're loading and unloading?
Yeah, like at the hydraulic shop.
Yeah.
They'll have a big work truck in, with a trailer behind it, too.
So does the cabinet shop.
Yeah.
Some of the others. But, you know, I've, we've even gotten some complaints sometimes when they're loading and unloading. With the current diagram, I think those things will just, that's going to happen every now and then, as long as the neighbors are working together. As long as we make it safer, but thank you for that.
And, and I understand about the loading and unloading, but this seems, those cars that are panel trucks, for example, that are parked on the post office side are there most of the day. So I don't know that they're in and out.
Well, that will definitely stop because that will be a moving lane. There will, there will be no parking spots up there.
That's a possibility.
So it'll stop immediately, and this, and this, the lines will be bright, it'll be new, and it'll be, it'll be, it'll be a lot better. Hopefully we'll jump on that quickly with Todd. No business there, any other discussion? Item as far as occupational tax ordinance was passed last...
Yes, passed last meeting.
Last meeting. No action this meeting. The next item on the agenda is approving the town's signage. As far as the signage goes, we discussed in the work session how the signs for the street signs have been ordered, but the stop signs, speed limit signs, and evaluation of such are still underway. Floyd has been nice enough to offer his assistance and give an evaluation of what's needed and what's not needed around the town as far as signs and speed limit. And hopefully by the December meeting, we'll get a report back from Floyd on, on, on his opinion on what we need and what we don't. A lot of the stop signs are shorter than they should be. A lot of the, some of them are leaning. Speed limit signs are the same way, some are missing. Some have speed limit signs on one side and not on the other. There's a lot of cleanup, a lot of cleanup around Turrin on signs. And so it's bigger than you think. Keweenaw County will do the work. We've talked about in the work session how Keweenaw County will provide the signs too. I don't believe they will, but if there's someone that says they will and they can show it to us and it's legal, then we'll do that, but I believe we'll be responsible for buying the signs and Keweenaw County will put them up for us as long as we get approval from the commissioners. Let's go ahead and Renee, if you could get that approval from the commissioners to put up all of our signs, if we don't have that already. Review what we've sent Shannon in the past two months, make sure this is in the do. Please. Do we need a motion for that effect, Mark? Just a, just a request for help. Next item on the agenda is the judge's contract slash code enforcement. If we'll re-earade what we talked about in the work session, Mark, with regard to...
Yes, with the, I've been working with Judge Stripling to get a proposed contract intergovernmental agreement worked out. We've, between himself and me, we've got something worked out that's ready to be presented to the county commission for their consideration. And so my recommendation is before I send it to the county attorney that you reach out to Commissioner Poole and just let him know that that's going to be coming and be something that's going to require action by the county commission. So, once you've made that contact, then I'll forward the draft agreement to the county attorney so they can review and get it on the county commission's agenda.
Would you send me a copy of the draft?
Yes, sir.
Draft document, when I call Paul, I'll have something to write.
Absolutely.
Code enforcement was also, that side of that was also talked about at the work session with regards to that being a dual role possibly with some other help that the town needs.
Yes, and, and what I was suggesting that the council approved is that Mike and I develop a job description for that code enforcement slash resource person and sort of get that done and ready to advertise so we can start during the interviewing. I'm sensitive that Mike is going to be going off to council soon and I'll get as much work out of him as we can.
Fantastic.
Thank you, Councilman Bell.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate your work. So I don't know if we need to do anything official on that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, you, you'll, you'll form the committee to, you'll report back, and we'll discuss it December meeting. So we'll put this item in the December item as well. Sounds great. Next item on the agenda is budget year schedule change. And I was not at the last council meeting, but in review of the minutes, this was discussed in depth. It seems like a little bit of depth. Is it my understanding that this requires an amendment to our charter, Mark?
I don't have confirmation of that. My review of the charter so far, and I will make this priority to look at this tomorrow and try to get a definitive answer, but I don't think there's a provision, I don't think I have seen a charter provision that establishes what the city's, what the town's fiscal year is, so.
I thought we did have that in there, as it was from like, let's just say from January to December. I thought that was in there.
I'll, I'll finish looking at what I've got in front of that. Like I say, I haven't found where that's in the charter, so.
I know, our, our charter does say that we will, we shall institute a property tax too. That's just for public consumption. But we don't do that. But I, but, but with, as far as the amendment to the charter, I don't see it. I've read the charter over a couple of times too, I don't see where the budget is, is even mentioned.
Yeah, I'd like to say, I didn't, haven't found that either. If it is a change, if we find something and it requires a change, that would be a change that could be accomplished by the council through adoption of an ordinance. It would not require a local legislation or any act of Georgia legislature to do that. So, if we determine it needs to be done, then we can get that accomplished pretty easily.
Okay. So by December, we should have that, well, I mean, we should be able to move with that. Discussing the budget, was there a, any talk of the budget in this last month meeting? Since we're on the budget topic, can we set up a budget work session?
I always discuss that too.
I thought, well, I wasn't there, but I don't see it on the...
We did not set up a time. We saw about the need to have it, but we didn't.
We did. And we really didn't get past the legal question about the charter and how we would have to go about doing that.
Well, regardless of the charter, we're still subject to our current schedule.
Yeah.
So, so we, we now need to, so, how about the next scheduled work session is a week prior to the council meeting? Is that, we can count that as our?
We could.
Or do you want to, we can meet sooner, but November, just, November, December becomes a busy month for everybody.
Everybody, yeah.
Thanks, you're welcome.
Question, as we talk about that, do we have to have two readings of the budget to pass it? Mark, is that accurate?
No, the, it can be adopted by resolution, so that only requires one reading. But state law requires that before you adopt the budget, at least one week prior to the meeting at which you're going to adopt the budget, you have to have a public hearing. And that public hearing has to be advertised at least ten days in advance. So if you're thinking that you're going to take some action in your December meeting to adopt a budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty as, as your fiscal year currently is, then we need to get those, get that ad run pretty quickly. Because now that the paper only runs, publishes twice a week, your opportunities for advertising are more limited.
Also, in recognition that we have a new city clerk that's never been through this process yet or has established a budget, I, we may end up, it may be one of those years we extend this year's budget, but I would like to limit that scope as much as possible and get whatever we can done this year. We should at least have the work session, and the normal time we have a work session, and add that, that as an agenda item. I mean, and then we can...
Just, just because of the dates though, we, if we were going to do anything, if we're going to make a move on it, we would have to publish that in the paper this week.
This week, yes.
Just because of this, just because of the week, the way the weeks run.
I would say we post it this week for the public hearing and the adoption at the December meeting. And if we don't meet that requirement by the work session, we can amend the agenda prior to taking away.
Sure. So, so I'll run the ad for the public hearing on the day that you have your work session and then adoption of the budget at your December meeting. Is that correct?
So December ninth.
Yeah, December, December ninth is going to be the public hearing and work session.
Okay. Alright, I'll get that ad put together into the paper tomorrow.
Okay. New business, update on Roundabout. The DOT had a meeting here, happened to have a meeting here about three weeks ago?
Yep.
Two weeks ago that I invited all the council to just to, and, and it's one of those deals where they scheduled a meeting. I found out about the meeting on a Tuesday, for a meeting that was on a Thursday. And it wasn't a Turrin meeting, it was a, it was a DOT meeting that they wanted to have here because we're the closest to the Roundabout. And then I asked if we could invite the council, and they said, of course, it's a public meeting as far as they're concerned. They've done all the public requirements for notification of that. But the update is, what was the let date now? Some, some two thousand twenty? October two thousand twenty is the let date for the Roundabout. So that's as much as we know, and I would be very surprised if it was October twenty of two thousand twenty.
They were very skeptical, yeah.
So when you say let date, you mean for bidding on the contract for it or something other than that?
That's what the, when the DOT says a let date, that's, that's what they're talking about.
So when does work start happening on that date? About, it could be six months, it could be...
That's right.
So we're stuck with a mini, mini till now. And again, every time we talk about the Roundabout, I mention the same thing. We're still in talks with them about two things in regards to the Roundabout. One is we've got utilities that are within the Roundabout that we're going to get utility aid from the state of Georgia that will assist us in moving those lines. At the same time, we can replace some older lines running from Sharpsburg to the tower and possibly to the tower to Turrin. We may not do all that at that time, and it's a perfect opportunity since we're already, we already have to touch those lines at that point, and we'll already be getting aid for that. We're so far away from that, we're not, we haven't gotten to the nitty-gritty of that. But once we do, the council will approve all of that, if so be it, if they so, if they do approve it, then that's what we'll do. The next item is the, in the center of the Roundabout, they're giving us some latitude for, for some kind of a greenery, landscape plan, welcome to Turrin statue. Nothing that people will go to, but something that you can put in the center of that Roundabout, at least some greener, greenery, things like that. That to be determined as well, that we need to, they'll, they'll do the, the, the Georgia DOT will do the bare minimum. And then anything over and above that, we'll be responsible for. It's within our splosts to do those kind of improvements. We'll, we'll address that when we get within a few months of the project completion. So we're probably talking two or three years down the road, a couple of years down the road. I believe that once the Roundabout starts, it'll be, I think they, did they say a year?
At least a year.
At least a year build-out for that. So it's going to be a, needs to say it's going to be a nightmare on probably sixteen for that period of time. And fifty-four. That's all for the update on the Roundabout that I'm aware of, unless anybody else has heard anything or knows anything more. Next item on the agenda is provide assistance for the clerk transition. Mike, you were, you...
So, for the citizens, we need to inform you that Tracy Townsend, the previous clerk, found another job and she left effective October the fourth. Renee Schrus is the assistant, has assumed those duties. So, we're transitioning over. Renee's a great financial person. She's not as experienced with the government functions as Tracy was. So we're going through a bit of a transition period, and I even get to participate that in sort of an administrative way, which is complicated. So, but we're working on that, and so Renee's got a fresh look at some things. She needs a little bit of mentoring, and so we have located some people that help kind of sister cities with things like that. And so what we'd like to do is bring somebody in and sort of sit with her a couple of days a week, maybe for a month, see how that works out. For example, there's a lady that did the same thing over in Brooks and got them up to speed, and so she now does an audit for them, financial audit, every month before they close their books. So, we're kind of looking into something like that to try to help her. The GMA, Georgia Municipal Association, they have offered to also come and assist us. So we've reached out to the community, and we're going to get her some help, and she's pedaling as fast as she can. But we would ask that you be a little bit patient with her until we get some of that worked out. So we could introduce Renee Schrus. And she's a nice person, I believe, but she can be fun, so. She's firm with me.
Okay.
Is there anything else you'd like to say?
I'm just learning a lot, so I'm going to be, you know, just be patient even like I said. And we will get done.
Yep. And we just, I will tell you, we just really appreciate the fact that she's persisting in this because if she says, oh, well, she left, I think I'm going to, we would be in trouble. Okay, so please be nice to her, that would be very helpful. Okay?
Alright, thank you.
I would say, so I guess, so what we're, we're going to pursue that and try to get her some assistance. And so, we need just some consensus from the council that that's okay for us to proceed, and we'll report back on whatever we think is the best approach, and so you'll be informed about that.
Sure. Okay.
Thank you.
Next one. Administrative update? Nothing. Committee update? No committee update. Planning commission update? I understand they didn't meet this month. I just got the notice. Anything for the water system update? Nothing, any leaks, anything major, water committee brakes? Citizen comments, we've got three in order, I believe, Matt? You were down as a citizen comment, Matt, too?
Mr. Mayor, Captain, and there's some citizens of Turrin. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'll be brief, and let me assure you that I'd rather not be here, standing here addressing you this evening. However, due to some disturbing activity that has occurred in recent weeks, I felt that it was imperative that you and the citizens of Turrin be made aware of what's been taking place in our town. I have a son who's served as a state trooper for seven years, and he now serves as a special agent for the Secret Service. and he now serves as a special agent for the secret service. On two separate occasions, I've had the privilege of witnessing, witnessing him swear an oath to uphold and support the law. I'm sure that councilman staff is familiar with that oath, having served as a law enforcement officer for how many years is the town?
It's about twenty-one now.
Twenty-one years. For those of you who are familiar with the law enforcement oath of honor, it reads, "On my part of never betraying my badge, my integrity, my character for the public trust, I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions. I will always uphold the constitution, my community and the agency I serve." I also took that oath many years ago, which is one reason why I felt compelled to speak to you tonight. In my twenty years of military service, I quickly learned that an individual in a position of leadership is both responsible and accountable for the actions of those who follow and support you. Again, I'm sure that with his background and experience in law enforcement and military council and staff, and I would hope that everyone here could agree with that statement, that a leader is responsible for their followers. Probably everyone in this room is aware of the recent election that was held to fill two seats on the Turin Town Council. What you may not be aware of is that during that, his campaign, Mr. Schatt violated federal law by illegally distributing his campaign material. Specifically, he placed or allowed his supporters to place, place this card and this slip of paper in U.S. mailboxes without paying postage. U.S. Code for Crimes and Criminal Procedure prevents the placement of unstamped flyers in mailboxes. It states that any person who knowingly deposits available material without postage in a mailbox shall be subject to a fine, which may be as high as five thousand dollars per occurrence. While I did not witness Mr. Schatt distributing his campaign material, I was informed that this material was found in mailboxes when he oversubdued subdivision. However, the day before the election, I did personally witness one of his supporters, Miss Jenny Star, distributing his campaign material along North Hunter Street. Ten minutes later, I found these items in my mailbox. I subsequently discovered that these items had been placed in other mailboxes along North Hunter Street. While some of you might consider this activity as trivial, no big deal, I would argue to the contrary. This is indicative of a dangerous attitude that the law does not apply here. And if that's your attitude regarding this activity, I would question with great concern what other lawful and ethical behavior would you consider trivial and not applicable? You might also argue that the individuals involved in this activity didn't know that it was illegal. I would contend that that is a self condemning argument, especially since Mr. Schatt has been a police officer for twenty-one years. And I would remind you that ignorance of law is no excuse. It's my understanding that these three citizens of Turin, myself included, have filed complaints with the U.S. Postal Service. It's embarrassing for our town that a city councilman would be involved in this activity. Not only is it illegal, it is certainly unethical. And if it's not addressed under our town's newly adopted ethics ordinance, it most certainly should be. Because its activities such as this by any elected official that raised question, is Turin worthy to become a city of ethics? Thank you.
Alan, you've got a, Alan, over.
My only, my only suggestion that I was gonna offer tonight was, when I'm recording meetings, we're getting a lot of echoey sounds because of the building. Uh, if we could maybe construct some wooden frames with the furlap or something in them to help absorb some of that sound, I think our sound probably would be a little better. How was your one?
Thanks, thanks. And I, and I thought since we do have picture load and we can hang it without actually putting holes in the walls.
Didn't we talk about, didn't we just have some blankets there?
We did, we had some blankets. I don't know that it helped any, but we'll, we'll revisit, thanks for the, for the thought. Last public comment that I have, uh, or citizen comment I have is Rick Bryant. Rick?
Mr. Mayor, councilman, I appreciate the opportunity to voice my concerns about traffic on Railroad Street. Uh, I don't understand why it's happening, but eighteen wheelers, excuse me, eighteen wheelers going to Carlsbad Slumery Yard, they've decided to use my front yard as part of Railroad Street. And I've got huge, big trucks in the front yard and all of the time it rains, I ended up with a bomb in the front yard. And since this area is not really part of the truck lot, I don't understand why they're coming this way and turning down on Highway sixteen and using my front yard to swing the trailer and keep them going in the ditch by the railroad. I say it's a mystery, we need a supplier to do it.
Are, are they coming from the church to your house, taking a light on in front of your house?
They, they seem to have been taken, yeah, they're, they're doing, and I've seen them coming off the sixteen and going that way. It doesn't make sense.
In front of the churches and then, okay. Well, the reason I ask that is we've had, I think there's a no trucks sign coming the other way on Railroad Street, coming the east on Railroad Street, but maybe not going west towards your, in other words, right where you turn, in front of your, in front of your house where Walter is, was, or whatever, that should be a no truck route sign heading in your direction.
Evidently they're ignoring the sign, just like they're ignoring the stop sign. I've seen eighteen wheelers just fly right through that intersection, I'm sorry, man. I just wanted to bring it to your attention, if there's somebody that's...
While we're reviewing the sign, uh, placement, that'll be one of them that we'll review as well. Maybe we can get better signage there to let the truckers know. There's also, you know, a lot of these truck drivers to their, uh, uh, defense, maybe their first time across miss, maybe they're following Google Maps or Yahoo Madison or whatever.
I see a lot of them looking at smartphones, doing their GPS.
So they're not paying attention to signs or paying attention to whatever it says right here. But we'll, we'll address it with at least as much help as we can.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Um, there's nothing, it doesn't say closed session, but I believe we have anything after closed session. Well, on future, uh, agendas, I always like to put a closed session there in case we need to have a closed session for any reason.
We could move it.
That's the mayor's stupidity, sorry. I believe we're having two pages agenda. But that's cool, no, I'm learning, I'm learning with you, I'm good. I've, I've not been doing this that long, so I should know better, right? Uh, let's go to, uh, let's forget everything I just said, I don't mark that out. We'll go to council comments, Clarence?
Well, I'm marking out plenty of that council comments on this first page. I didn't look at the second page either, so you don't like it, so. No, I don't have very much, uh, to say. I'm, I'm happy and proud of that we have council members who elected and went, uh, without incidentals, too, we heard from Mac this evening. But congratulations to Alan and to Susan. Looking forward to working with you. I'm sad Mike is leaving, I understand you can't spend your whole life here, although I tried to convince him he could. Uh, but I'll miss working with them and I appreciate this happen, work with them, the two years I've been on to council.
Thanks, Clarence, Mike?
This is my last meeting. Three years, eleven months, it's been a ride. So we appreciate your support. Um, I will tell you that the reason I'm not gonna continue or didn't seek reelection is I've started a project to, uh, provide patent assistance awards to science students. And we awarded one at the Georgia State Science Fair this year. And the educators, um, have asked if we can extend that outside of the science fair. So now I get to work with other people in the state and I just, I don't have time to do that and actually be a full-time council person, so I just had to pick something. And, uh, I, I think we got a good council person that can replace me. Just appreciate Susan coming on to do that, so I miss y'all. I'll probably be sitting on that side of the table in the future as much as I can, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. We appreciate your service. Alan?
I don't have anything.
Fernando?
Nothing.
Mayor's comments. We have, uh, special guests here today from East Cowee to High School. Is it Megan and Morgan?
Yes.
And I thought there, I wrote that down, I thought there's no way it's Megan and Morgan. Alright, and they're, they're doing a project for East Cowee to High School, uh, on, is it journalism or something?
Um, specifically the county also, we are known for like county and state meetings and writing about what goes on.
Okay. You have any questions for us or?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, well, thank y'all for coming, we appreciate you being here. Uh, I have no other comments, nothing to go to for closed session personnel or personnel. Alright, can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting? I'll make a motion to adjourn, can I get a second? All in favor, say aye. Thank you. Thank y'all for coming.